You're all set.
Thank you very much. In the opening of the meeting, do I need to as one, make anything?
Just the, the name of the committee and that it's being broadcast.
And we ask the board to look at the whole thing. Okay, thank you. Now to open the, uh, meeting of the committee to review town council rules and town code, uh, this is July thirtieth, five twenty-four, five P M. This meeting has been recorded and will be broadcast, rebroadcast on the Town of Orangeville government access channel. In accordance with the Massachusetts general laws, chapter thirty A, section twenty, the chair must inquire whether anyone else is reporting this meeting, and if so, to make their presence known. Anybody else have a call? This meeting will be replayed via Xfinity Channel eight or high definition Channel ten seventy-two. It may also be accessed via the government access channel live video on demand archived in the Town of Orangeville's website, streaming eighty-five dot TownofOrangeville dot U S dot cablecast public site. Backslash.
Chris, if you could speak up just a little bit.
Okay.
So I can pick up your voice.
Understood. Thank you very much. Okay, well, start a little more call, please.
Counselors, verdict.
Present.
Turpleson.
Present.
Lucky.
Here.
Tamish.
Here.
Chair of committee, Chris Clark.
Thank you very much.
In your full form, you're also joined by town attorney Karen Milker.
And Allison.
And Allison Cagliano.
Assistant town attorney.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Public comment. Will anybody? I don't think we can do something.
Very quick, so Karen Milker. Good afternoon, Bob Shulte, Senator. As it's been over a month since the committee last met, I just wanted to restate several items that I've mentioned to you previously, both verbally and in writing, that I would like to see you consider, and none of which I believe have been addressed in Attorney Milker's recommendations today. They are, first, the establishment of term limits for all town committee and board positions, for example, two or three terms maximum. We have term limits for county positions, and I believe we should also have them for committee and board positions. Two, the establishment of a cap on the number of committee and or board positions that any person can sit on at one time. For example, you know, a cap of two committees or boards, not multiple committees or boards. And third, the establishment of a limit on the number of consecutive terms that an individual can serve as the chairperson of a specific committee and or board, for example, with two or three, uh, term limits. Finally, I'd like to voice my strenuous objection to Attorney Milker's proposed change to Rule A, in which it is proposed that the chair of ad hoc committees must be a counselor. Our town has had numerous ad hoc, ad hoc committees over the years, and the chairs of these committees have never been required to be a counselor. I hope it wasn't intended, but as one of two citizens who was voted as the chair of a recently created ad hoc committee, and then was unanimously voted to that position, by the way, I honestly find the lack of the change to be somewhat insulting to citizens, who would like to hear the rationale for making such a change. Based upon all of the feedback I've received from the committee members, both counselors and citizens, as well as members of the general public, everyone has been very complimentary, and is pleased with the job that I'm doing as a citizen, and the manner in which the committee's work is proceeding. I fail to understand why we want to preclude citizens from being a chair of an ad hoc committee, and ask that you do not accept that recommendation. Thank you.
Hi, Heather Hunt. Assistant, uh, Orangeville. So I had sent in some comments a few weeks ago to preserve your talk time here. I brought a few copies in case anyone didn't have any. I'll, I'll not take your time and go through those with any specificity, but I'd be happy to answer any questions, and maybe I can just address them, sort of at the highest level, kind of in, in what I call sort of like some buckets. Let me start on a, on a high note. I'd say that the, the practices that have been implemented since December, January, with regard to the administration of the town council, which I think gives citizens, you know, the best opportunity to, to engage, have really been excellent, and that is putting out, you know, an agenda on the Friday before the meetings, allowing other counselors, frankly, who represent us, to be sort of in the discussions about those agenda-setting meetings. Asking the, the town manager with all due respect to sort of put the, put the report in writing so that we all have the benefit of hearing you speak at the town council meetings, um, and so forth. It, I think it would be really helpful to kind of codify that practice in town council rules, uh, to the extent practical, you know, barring any reasons to depart from those on a going forward basis. I think the prior practice of, for example, putting agendas out as a minimum notice to custo- to residents. It really, it counters the town council strategy, which is to involve citizens in decision-making, and it really impedes people's ability to go out and, and talk to others about important ones that are coming up. So I, I think the code would, or the town council rules would be inappropriate place to just make permanent those really constructive changes so that they live on beyond, you know, personalities. In, in connection with that, I would also argue that it would be really useful for this committee to put in some measures in the town council rules to guard against what I would consider to have been town council overreach in prior years. And that would include, for example, things, whenever I give examples, right, people like to pick at the examples, but if you don't give an example, people say, oh, they're into that, so I'm just gonna give a couple of examples. We've, we've heard, uh, uh, reports that prior town council leadership has postured themselves as the gatekeeper of communications between citizens and the balance of counselors, even when citizens send things to the council asking for full distribution to the council. There, there's no authority to do that, and it would seem appropriate to sort of guard against that kind of overreach on a going forward basis. There are some other examples of that, that I'll just let you read here, but I, I think it would be helpful to let citizens know annually, what are the duties of the town council leadership, they're set out in, in the, you know, founding documents, and sometimes you refer other matters to them or defer other matters to them. It would be helpful to keep something sort of available to the public to know what exactly the duties of leadership are. And so that you all know what exactly the duties of leadership are and are not. I'm, I'm gonna just spend a, a second on the issue of town council ad hoc subcommittees, which I think also kind of falls in that category of town council leadership overreach. There's no need to sort of talk through the prior ad hoc committees, um, and how they were formed, kind of contrary to the rules. I, I simply call that out to say it would be constructive to put something additional in either the code and or the town council rules to underscore the need for cert, for compliance with what the code currently conveys. Right, that, those things have gone really ignored for years, and when citizens kind of put their hands up and, and ask for the rules to be followed, there, there's no recourse. And if you later approach town management to say, can someone help, there's still no recourse. So I, I would just argue that doing something incremental in the rules to ensure that ad hoc subcommittees are appropriately tailored, as they have been structured and formed, as they are currently, would be really helpful to residents. There has been an issue about the integrity of the maintenance of public records here. If, if you don't in the first instance maintain public records, every record request that every citizen does is, there, there's questions around the integrity of that. I don't think the town should have to put in place rules that require all documents to be backed up according to the law, but the fact is, you do, and I think there should be a consequence if they're set forth, uh, if something isn't applied with, in that regard. Just gonna skim through. Uh, another really important one to me, and this is based on my own experience, is something in the code to ensure that the town is not enabled to give citizens, I'm gonna just do straight talk and say runaround, on town enforcement of zoning rules, and that is, the state law requires the town to respond to citizens who ask for enforcement or writing, and the town interpreted that in, in the past to mean, all I have to do is that I tell, tell you that I intend to respond to you one day. And that, according to the town, sort of check the legal box of responding to the resident. I, I went through that with the town and actually have to go to court, get a judge to say that's actually not legitimate, and you actually have to respond to the person, it costs me a lot of time and a lot of money. And I think it should be apparent to any citizen who's paying the salary of our zoning enforcement folks to know what their rights are in clear, plain English, uh, when they make such complaints. So if there's any clarity that you could do in the code to just sort of pull through what that judge said into plain English for plain people to understand what their rights are, it would be, I think, helpful and prevent problems going forward. There's a couple of things here that I, I also, you know, the occupancy code and the code of ethics, I'm gonna bundle those things together. There are provisions of the code today that I think are important and in place for good reason, that includes the occupancy code, homes, and also the code of ethics. I think that there should be adjustments to the code to, um, either enforce them and give them some teeth. And if you all sort of collectively determine in your judgment that the code of ethics is, is irrelevant, and that the only code of ethics that matters are direct, you know, personal, familial, financial interests and so forth pursuant to the state code of ethics, then I think you should actually strike the code of ethics from the books and just own that there are no additional, you know, commitments about integrity and so forth in the operation of town government. Similarly, with the occu, the occupancy limits. If we regularly let, uh, homes be sort of overstuffed, and, and reports of that sort of overstating with twenty people in a house, three families in a house, wedding parties in a house, and that goes on. Go unchecked, um, I would argue just take it off the books. So that when people who are thinking about buying a home on the Cape and want a nice sort of residential lifestyle, they might know what to expect if they come to Orangeville versus if they go to, you know, Sandersville and so on. And finally, I'll, I'll echo what the last one had to talked about, and that is with regard to public body service. Um, everybody's so grateful for people who volunteer their time. I, I would add that it would be very helpful to have some parameters set forth in writing in the code to require people who step forward to serve to disclose their financial interests. There's lots of times when there are, I'll, I'll say sort of curious questions or, or conduct coming from the bench of people on the Google phones who can find why. I think that should actually never be the case. And, and with regard to disclosure for the, for the appointments committee, there have been circumstances where it, it seems, based on that kind of review, the appointments committee doesn't even have knowledge about, uh, people who step forward, their financial interest, their business, and move people forward to committees with the knowledge that they have. It was seen reasonable to, to require some sort of affidavit or disclosure. Really, that's just for transparency and visibility of the citizens who appear before those boards to know who they're sitting in front of. And if you happen to answer any questions now or later, as you read this night, I appreciate it.
Laurie Moore, and that's a tough act to follow. And Solis also. I had submitted to proof today, I submitted, uh, uh, comments covering all of the fifteen or sixteen rule rearrangement. I didn't expect, I don't really expect any comment today. I hope that all the concrete has worked and have given me some feedback, feedback of each other. The idea of leadership is a, is, is valid, but I think what we're looking at, I know all five of you, some of you better than others. What really matters is I completely trust you as being able to take these issues and giving them thorough thought to them, and not just rubber stamping them. I also think that you're the ones that make the decision. The town attorney does not tell you what to do. You're the ones that decide. The, uh, the issues, I'm gonna try to read my own hierarchic notes here. I'm going back earlier and put together a breakdown of the town council rules. I did a breakdown of the administrative code, chapter two forty-one, and I did a breakdown of the charter. You have my notes on that. I didn't do anything different since, since the last two twenty-five meeting. But I think that you either need to address it and just say, yes, we can, we see where it fits, or just say that we don't feel that we can go over that, give us some response on that. I have two pending draft documents, one of which deals with, uh, public comment and one deals with the appointments committee, chapter thirty-seven. I'm gonna rework that, clean it up a little bit, but just what Heather just said, I think public comment needs to have response. Uh, and my proposal is maybe off the wall, but if it's not off the wall, then their ideas are being missed. I don't want those ideas to be overlooked. I want them to be considered, and I want them to be public. Same with the appointments committee. I've been, uh, a victim of the appointments committee, but more importantly, I've been, become very aware of it. Well, this year, I, I do not, the victim that I am is the reason I'm here, and I value that. Occupancy, Heather, that's something that, I don't even know, I'm just trying to concentrate on keeping my own house. The committees, however, is a critical issue that needs to be dealt with because there are many people, not just what the appointments committee does, it's, I think this, this year they were overloaded with the ad hoc things, and I think the role they did of ad hocs was indispensable. I think they did as good a job as possible, could be done under a very short race. But there are too many people on the committees that have been there forever and think, once they're appointed, they're there for life. There are too many committee members who think that once they're appointed, they're the ones that can decide what they want to do. So that's, that's where chapter two forty-one, article two forty-one is very flawed. It doesn't say what they're supposed to do, and they don't adhere to that. There's also people who either chair it or have been there a long time, that, uh, they lose focus on why they're there. Now, how do you, as a committee, do that? You may well delegate it to somebody else, and waiting in the loom as four of you are on the committee on committees. So when the time comes for you to have that, I'm gonna come ready, prepared. I'm gonna come loaded with all these things you work on and think about, and, uh, and I'm confident that we'll communicate well. More importantly, I value what you're doing. I know you're in a lot of responsibility at the conference.
Response?
Not a sponsor, but can I have a copy of your?
Oh, yes.
Sure.
Was that your comment?
It wasn't. It's just I wanted to get it forward.
Yeah, I, I'll speak, but thank you to all three of you, and I think it's important that you all mentioned, uh, committees, and I think that's absolutely critical, and I think I spoke early on in January when a group of us went up to the training that Mass Municipal Association gave up at Fort Devens, and they talked about the importance of committees. So I take those words very seriously, and I think it's really important that we get that right. And I like some of the ideas, some very, um, concrete, very clear ideas that Bob you brought to it, and, um, I think those are absolutely important. The, the more I get into this stuff, especially recently with some of the Winston, Ridd farm stuff, clarity becomes paramount to me. We need much more clarity in this town. We need to know who is speaking for the town, and I think these roles become incredibly important, to be clear and precise, and so everyone knows what everyone's doing. And again, the focus on the committees, I think, is, is absolutely critical, and all three of you mentioned it. Um, I know there's been a lot of discussion about the occupancy that Heather brought up, I think, in the zoning committee. I'm not on that, but I, I watched the videos, some of that, that we've seen at last. But, uh, just all good comments as we go through, I, I appreciate the input on that.
I just wanna speak to Bob's comment about, um, the objection to Rule eleven A, that it must be a counselor for the ad hoc. Um, I am part of the committee that Bob is chair of, and it's a very well-known meeting. I think, you know, in, in all of the interviews we had for the ad hocs, we really got to see how amazing our residents are. And I think, um, we as a group hope that we wanna have a non-town counselor as a chair. I think that's probably based on experience and who, who's, who's in the run at the time, so I would support that. So I don't support limiting that to just being a, a council, and also some legal reason. And Heather, I appreciate your comments, um, and again, I think that goes along with some of the things that I've seen at the zoning ad hoc is that, are the ordinances that we have and the enforcement we have, is there something that we, we don't have that's strict enough or well-laid out enough of processes, or is it that we don't have staff? I mean, I think it's a multi-layer issue, but again, it's about what we have, having teeth to be effective, so I hear you on that. Um, and Larry, I haven't had time to read your email, but it's on my list, which I, and I appreciate all the work that you've done.
I'll just, uh, just reiterate, uh, thank you all three for coming. I think it's important that we get the influence, and it's very helpful to have the perspective perhaps as we.
Yes, thank you for making the time, and that's actually an impression. That's focused for our career, and I appreciate it. Town council president for initiating this, this overview for, uh, laws and town code.
Could I just say one comment? On Rule eleven A, um, I had provided all of you with updated draft of, of the rules that basically reflected the changes that we had agreed to, um, and then I put in, um, highlighted language anything that I can go on back and done something different. So Rule eleven A, I added a sentence that says, "The chair of any such ad hoc committee shall be a counselor unless expressly permitted otherwise by the council in its vote establishing the committee." So that's a modification of what was there previously. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I apologize that I missed the last meeting. I had spoken with counselor Lucky, and only heard because I wanted to trip a, um, a firm issue. And I had, um, opened the meetings. Rule five, where it says, "A timely plus regular meeting shall be published in December of each year for the following calendar year." I had thought, uh, for some time now, that when a new counselor is, um, elected in November, then the new council gets sued, that establishing the, um, calendar for the following year is short notice for not letting council to, but, but to public, that they get their calendar for, um, for our meeting schedule in December, that starts the next month, January. So I don't think it's, um, a, um, reflective of a counselor that's newly elected to no point will they meet. And part of it is so that people can plan their time off and, um, other personal plans with a longer view on, on the yearly schedule. So I don't think it matters who's elected, but I think we could, we could decide now, when the county council meets, um, this, in, in August for the next year. The school calendar is already set until the next June. But I, but that we meet the first and third Thursdays of the month. And we have modified it along the way anyways, depending on, uh, conflicts with any religious holiday. So I think that, um, December is too late in the year, and I'm suggesting that we can make it in, um, uh, meeting schedule for the town council sooner than that. I wonder if anyone has comments. I know that you have already addressed yours, but, yes.
The exception, as you said, of religious holidays, it's pretty much set, the first and the third, and the third, uh, third, and the fourth.
Then you can look at religious holidays in the next year or June. It was just a school year that, that's, that ends in June, but this is the one codified.
And the first and the third meeting is a practice. The town code says, "Regular meetings shall be held on two Thursdays per month, plus a Tuesday Friday, except during July, and regular meetings shall be held on one Thursday per month." Uh, the dates of regular meetings shall be approved by the majority of the town council in December of each year for the following calendar year. So it's a change you can make, but it would be a change to the ordinance, not just to the rules. Does anybody else have a, issue with that?
I think it would be fine, what would it entail, um, Karen, to do that change to the town code? Two, two readings and a public hearing? I mean, I think it, I think it's fine. I think the school, uh, breaks are important, and I think the holidays are important. And I think Chris brings up a good point, that that's known in advance, and that way it's set.
Any objections?
I, I, I just, again, the, school vacations are pay-per-day, you know, pay-per-view, college, avenue. The, uh, Christmas. May it six of what happens in the other. If you're interested in when meetings are made, you can have a book that it's, uh, again, the only thing that's real in chain, um, school vacation, so it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a holiday.
So that's a suggested change, and I would, I can bet you all knew this at the last meeting. Any objection?
I, it's not that I object, I mean, as a new counselor, um, was I paying attention to when the meetings were and thinking I needed to plan, maybe if I had a vacation, I, I really wasn't. I mean, I think maybe more importantly, maybe as a town council, when somebody decides to run, maybe we reach out to that person and just say, listen, just so, so you know, this is what it's gonna look like. It can't change, and then we wouldn't need to go through changing the code. I mean, you know, if I had booked a vacation and I had, um, gotten my seat, I, I guess I would have made the decision to either change my vacation or miss the meeting. I think that we're gonna have, you're gonna be doing that as a town counselor through your entire time in the seat, though, because sometimes things just don't line up, and you can't rearrange. I mean, your personal life on some level becomes important over your town council life. So I don't, I don't really know that we necessarily need to change that. I see value in, in both ways, so. As a matter of point, and I'd be happy with that, I guess, as well.
Seems an adequate to change the code for really no, often kind of thing.
My point is that, um, codifying the, um, the meeting schedule in December that starts the following month, is short notice, not only for the council, but also for the public.
It's pretty well, pretty well fixed.
First and the third, and every month, except for those, I mean, for me, I see what you're saying, but, you know, I don't plan immediate personally. I'm just making that fine, so. I think it's gonna rise to the law, or just proposing to change the code, you don't want that, I would, I would, I would support that.
Okay, so one more. Can I say?
I'm fine with this thing. Well, I think especially if the code says it's two Thursdays per month, I mean, if the code already basically says that, then it would have to just be something that's gonna change, like, for this particular month, it's gonna be a Wednesday or something. When you do that, August would be separate, I don't believe it.
Well, typically, it's the first and the third, and then if there's some reason, a school vacation or something, it does change. But the default has been the first, I'm sure. The code just says two Thursdays.
The code just says two Thursdays, it doesn't, doesn't change.
I understand.
So it wouldn't be a matter of changing the code, it's just, uh, practice.
Well, you have to change the code because the code says you'll publish it in December.
Oh, I see that. Yeah, my point is that, on the first meeting in December, we're going on a, a calendar sched, meeting schedule that starts the next month. So it's not much, um, telegraphing to the public when a meeting's scheduled, it's not, not just.
How much, how much are we really impacting the public, though? I mean, we had a large amount of people saying, I couldn't attend a meeting, or I couldn't watch a meeting, or. I mean, we had a lot of other people saying, "I couldn't attend a meeting," or "I couldn't watch a meeting," or "I couldn't catch a look on tape," I mean.
I understand that, I'm just saying that officially, I think that's, that we, it's nothing, nothing we can't commit to right now. So we're meeting, uh, first, we can look at the orders and see where it falls, with the, um, causes any change in our meeting schedule. Now, we don't have to wait December or a new, uh, town council to decide that. It's just that it's more transparent for the public to say, "This is what our meeting schedule is."
Well, I think that, I think, I don't know what the exact rationale is, but to me, the council that's going to be meeting should be making the decision on when they'll be meeting. So if you have new councils, they have input as to when the council is meeting as opposed to doing it now. For a council, it may have been different the whole year.
That's all true that they, yeah, the result of any discussion would, would change.
Well, we changed it from Felicia for the religious holidays.
That's right.
And if Felicia wasn't here and we didn't have somebody whose religion was particularly affected by the schedule, we, we might not have changed the schedule. So what would happen if we set the schedule now and we didn't take into account the Jewish holidays? And then, then we roll around and we elect a new counselor, and now we're suddenly to change something that we previously stated, you know?
I think we also take those holidays into account for the residents of the town as well.
Yeah, well, I mean, and it didn't get done, I mean, you know, we didn't have Juneteenth, and we changed meetings for Juneteenth. So I mean, I guess in a general rule, we probably should be coming up with a calendar just as a general rule, but I, I don't, I guess I don't see the need to.
Good, I'm okay with that, I'm not wrong, but I, I can think that it'd be more considerate with a longer view into, um, into the year and with the Jewish holidays, no matter who's council president, are still.
Yeah, what Karen's saying is, is the schedule has such dates. Yeah, they changed it, but it hadn't been changed, it hadn't, I mean, you know, it was like, you know.
All right, so we want to look past this one. Any other comments on, yeah, questions?
So if I could, um, so what I did, and I thought it was just going off, it's actually what you know, it's that, but what I did was, I made the changes that you all have, um, decided on up to, I don't know what's going on, up to eight, eight, three. You're all taking something different.
Sixty.
Sixty.
Sixty. Is that where we left off?
Yeah, is that where we left off?
I believe so.
Okay, so that's where we left off, and, um, before we start there, if that's what you'd like to do, I went back and I made some minor, I think the minor should have just highlighted them, it's on the page. Rule five A, meeting requirements. I just changed one of the references to the open meeting law, instead of the words, "Unless an emergency," the exception applies, I just said, "The notice of the executive session has been appropriately posted in accordance with the open meeting law." I think that's probably a better way of saying it. So that's, that's new language, I'm just following that up here.
I have a question. If we have a situation like we have, with an issue that was emerging like that, what, what is the, um, do you still need forty-eight hours to convene a meeting? To, if we, if we had an issue and we wanted to convene the council, the public for an emergency, I don't think that is still forty-eight hours?
It, it is forty-eight hours, but there are exceptions where if it's a, if it's a matter not reasonably anticipated by the chair, and then you can do something within that forty-eight hour period, but the default, that's a high bar there, so the default should be, don't. So, yeah, so that, that's the only idea I'd make there.
And so taking out, unless an emergency exception applies, doesn't limit us to only the forty-eight hours, we could still, if there was a.
Right, because I can put in the words, "in accordance with the open meeting law," so it's whatever's authorized by the law. And then, and rule five C, introduction of council business, I put back in language, um, under the definition of measures and non-measures. Measures are actually, and I said in our charter, um, it says contract approvals, and I know we talked about this before, that even though it says contract approvals, there's a huge universe of contracts that don't go to the council and that are not measures. There are also sometimes contracts that do go to the council that are also not measures, they go for different reasons. And so I left in what we have under the definition of measures, certain contract approvals, for example, contracts which are required by law to be approved by the council, but then I put back in, under non-measures, the language that had been there, um, contract approvals, and I just added that are not measures, because there are sometimes reasons why we would like council approval for something, but that doesn't automatically make it not measure. That was just clarification there.
Can I ask in that area, this is something that came in Larry's comments about two readings, he may put a few comments about the two readings, that I find it a little fuzzy myself. You have one reading where nothing is said, absolutely nothing can be said, it's a miscommunication. What is that? Is that just to give the public an advantage? Is that purely for the public?
Yeah.
Put together stuff, and then all the discussion is at the second reading?
Right, and that's in the charter.
That's in the charter?
Yeah.
Do you, do you know the rationale?
I think that is the rationale.
Is that the rationale?
Yeah.
It's like notice work one up here.
Well, not every, and not every measure requires a public hearing.
Sorry, it's two readings, so for measures, if it's a measure, it's two reads.
Okay. And then, within that group of items, appropriations, loan orders, and ordinances require a public hearing. Ordinances actually require a public hearing, under our code, appropriations and loan orders, um, require them under the charter.
And the appointments committees, those are always two reads.
So those are two readings, but that's in the council rules, that's not a charter requirement.
That is not.
Because the appointments are not actually measures. So what the council rules did, and I don't pretend to know the whole history on this, this, this is how it was when I got here, but the council rules basically say, they don't say it quite like this, but even though it's not, even though appointments are not a measure, we want to do them as two reads. And so that's in here, that's something you can change, you can want to change. I, I expect the reason for that was to put the public on notice in the same way. Um, I don't know if it was, I don't know what the emphasis was for that. Um, so appointments are not measures, but under your rules, not the code, not the charter, you do them as two reads.
But now that the agenda's coming out, that material, it's almost a full week, it's something that we have the ability to. Have knowledge of it, Jack, we will come around.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's sort of interesting, but, but that's, that's where, that's where it is, it's just a little bit.
I'm prepared to move inside that. Comment has emerged after the first meeting. Or comment. And we often suspend it.
Exactly, yes. It's one that I have discussed, it's a very little discussion, and, uh, good amount of suspension.
You're gonna suspend it, you know, you're not have.
That's what I'm saying, I've seen suspensions, one that I've seen. And like I said, it comes out on Friday, I think there's plenty of opportunities. If anyone's following it, they would have seen the interviews, they would have seen the results of the pardons coming in, it's a lot of opportunities.
And partly, I mean, what should come out of this, I think, is whatever changes to the rules, so that you're not suspending the rules.
Exactly, that's what I think.
Yeah, well, often, this has been because there was an vacancy on the committee or commission. It's been a, it's on a post. So you can add this, remove the reason, suspend it frequently, some of the, I mean, to remove it would just be removing another layer of transparency. Because that's overall, it's a lot of, why not just do two reasons?
I have a question, that's historically, um, would suspension of the rules be typical for appointments? Or is that, is that something new within, within our council?
I think, um, except for, uh, we wait, I think it's often if there's a uncontested seat that's.
Pressing with, with, the core issue.
But I guess what I'm asking is, I know that that's, that's since we've been here, and I think part of that is due to the ad hoc, um, processes that are forming, so it's like, we're all catching up, so here we are, so we're kind of trying to get things. But like, in years prior to this council, would suspension of the most severe appointments be typical?
I don't think it's typical, I think it has happened.
It did happen. Yeah, I don't think it's typical.
The ad hoc situation, it's made it more likely because we've been catching up. So maybe if we didn't have the ad hoc thing, then we wouldn't be suspending the rules, because we would be having time for two reads, and it would be suspension.
No, I think most of the time, it, it has been followed, it's just if there's some urgency because of, there's a vacancy that's uncontested, and it's, um, there's a whole threat enough, uh, 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 quote, depends on how, how the particular body is treated, especially if they're in kind of bodies that have to, uh, meet and need to make a judgment on an issue before that committee, because if they don't, um, if they don't make a judgment, then by default, the petition gets. So I think that there has been some, not comment, but some pressure to, for, for the, um, the district. It's just kind of, you know, maybe this has been, we've defined a family candidate, somebody that emerged and presented a, a, a. So I, I would, I would love to, I would support the new two reads for transparency purposes. And I think that the, it is not typical that it has been a suspension of the rules.
No, I don't have a strong, shoot, I don't have a strong feeling on it, just to, to eliminate it. Pressure is necessary, but one thing I think we have to keep in mind is, is if we change the, uh, setting term limits on, on projects, on the, the committees, and that sort of, that we're getting a huge workload to get on, and, and, and it's, it's huge. Difference in how the whole process goes, that this can be one of the steps in the process, and I, I don't think that's necessarily. Well, we fair and party increased our workload, our own portion. Whether it was, whether it was right or wrong, our approach is, we created significant. More meetings.
Our workload, meaning.
Well, because, because of the way that we've been doing it, maybe because we've insisted on reading, interviewing essentially everybody. So if you're gonna do that for everybody, it gets to your point in any way, and you want to involve seventy people at a time, you're doing things anyway, just as, and as a side.
I just want to be clear, when you said we, we, we.
We have, by the, the tactic, to, meeting, we're coming in.
I think we should leave the two reads, and I guess if we get down to the term limits, maybe we'll have to leave this in at that point. Is that the answer?
I think so, yes.
So rule five D is entitled Agenda Setting, and we took out the internal stuff at the beginning, um, at the last meeting, and then it says, "The council president, after consultation with a sponsored counselor and town manager, shall determine placement of business in the council meeting agenda or other appropriate disposition." I then added, after that, new language, "The council president shall set deadlines for the submission of agenda items by other counselors, by the town manager, and by town staff, and the town manager." The reason, the reason for that is that, right now, we're doing things sooner, and we're posting the agenda sooner, and that's a council leadership decision that was made, and so this would codify that, it would essentially say, "The council president shall determine those deadlines." Obviously, you can't do it, you have to meet the forty-eight hour, um, but if you want to do it sooner, which is what we're doing now, there's that flexibility to do that. So I just added that, and I think that flexibility exists anyway, but I thought it would be useful to say that's, that would make sense. And the council agenda, including the town entities communication, shall be delivered to town councilors. I just added, and posted in accordance with open meeting law, the way it was quoted, obviously, so. And then the next page, which I think is where we're getting up to where.
If we're, sure, keep in mind, yeah. Suggesting that we codify that, so that it, it sure, how the council president found a more specific one which to get the, the.
I mean, I think that's a recommendation you all can make. I think in general, you elect the leadership, um, and leadership plays a certain role in terms of structuring, um, the agenda and, and running the meeting and all that kind of stuff, and I think, personally, I would give them the flexibility to figure out how they think things ought to work. And keeping in mind, you're up against the state rule of forty-eight hours, if you want to make it earlier, which is what we're doing, you can do that. I don't know that you would want a rule that would bind a cons, a council president, but that's your recommendation to make.
I, I think that the forty-eight hours, obviously, is the state law. If you put the Friday after this, if you put Friday in there and say, "Shall be, uh, by the Friday prior to the meeting," and that is not met, would that then give, invalidate the meeting? Because it wasn't done in accordance with council rule?
I don't think so, I mean, the way I look at it now, it's, we're using the Friday deadline, and we're basically meeting that. But if something comes up between Friday and Monday, and we need to repost the agenda, we can do that, because state law says we're still within that time period, so it gives the town some flexibility, we still have compliance with the law, but we're basically, in generally, doing that earlier posting. But, you know, it gives that flexibility, I don't think it would invalidate the meeting, but I think you would then be in a position of not following your own order. So I think this, this gives flexibility, and, and even so, it says, "Shall set deadlines." Friday is our posting deadline, that's what we're currently working under. But there have been times where we've then posted to add something to the agenda that's still meant for forty-eight hours. And, you know, I don't have, I don't, as a legal matter, I don't have an issue with that, because we're complying with the law.
Can we say something more, preferably by Friday, without, without, of soft weapons?
You, you all can, you can, you can say whatever you want.
Because I think it's worked, worked out well.
I think it's worked out there.
And I think that, that it's been well received by the public.
Shall, council, shall, president shall endeavor to post it by Friday prior to the meeting, yeah? There's not any teeth in this anyway, I mean, even if they don't, but it was as a recommendation, as a guideline, makes sense, you know what I mean, if you say that? You know what I mean, what happens if you say, if they, if they fail to? What happens, essential of the town council, but, so it doesn't hurt to have it in there, is what I'm saying, if you just said, "Shall be posted."
I mean, if you want to say, "Shall set deadlines for the submission of agenda items," with the goal of posting the meeting agenda the Friday before.
I think that sounds good, yeah, thank you.
And I, and I think that gives, uh, those who think that maybe we would sweat back to, back practice a little bit more, um, comfort, right, and at any point, just as we're doing some later council, please say, oh, it makes sense.
Okay, I think if you say with the goal, and it's aspirational, we can generally strive to do that, but if you can't for some reason.
Say a hurricane blew through town and disabled communications or something, so then forty-eight hour.
It's, it's not necessary to specify how the review is made, right now, I, by email. One point, wasn't it, we had to actually send a copy, they had to run this conference or something?
Yeah, I think we took that. Yeah, I think we took that, I think that language was somewhere. I think we took that out because obviously it's not.
Leaving it to shall be delivered leaves it wide open, however, that.
Yeah, I think we had made that change for that reason. I don't know if there was anything just something that, I do remember seeing that because I was like, no one's delivering, you can't deliver any of this anymore. Yeah, yeah.
Well, just if you need to be delivered, is that extraneous information? If it's posted, then it's posted. And the town counselor or citizen, people see it. Do we need delivery?
Well, it's email. It's email to me now.
I know, okay, we need that. Is that?
I would think so. If you were the council, you should be getting the agenda provided to you. And I would think an email stresses any resources or anything like that. I think it should be emailed. You shouldn't have to.
I mean, could the email say the agenda is posted?
I guess it could. I, I, I think if you're the board members, you should get the agenda delivered to you. That's up to you.
Thank you for mentioning that, Cindy. Okay. So the kind of, sorry, I didn't realize you were.
By the way, I.
Fire to catch.
Yeah, so that's, so, so we'll add that additional language. Um, and then again, I just added the words and posted in accordance with. Later than forty-eight. And the next page. So the next page is public comment. And I'm assuming. I did look at it, but some of the other town council rules from other towns, they vary, I guess, in terms of how they structure a public comment. It didn't seem like there was any appetite to add any more to this. So I think the language we had um was, you know, we added some language, um, which I think is fine. We didn't say people had to sign in advance or, or some towns say three minutes, but if there's a room, people who show up, you can drop us a queue. We just said it's generally three minutes, but it's up to discretion of the chair, which I think is fine. What I added here that's new is no member of the public may speak at a council meeting without first being recognized by the chair. And then I added a sentence which I took from, I forget what town. The intention of the public comment variant is for the council to hear comments from the public and not for the public to engage in discussions or debate with the council. I think that's just a statement of fact. I did mention to Kinsler, when I got here.
Trouble.
That I, I guess I just wondered to what extent, and I know, I don't know, maybe you don't want to address this stuff, but um I was bringing up an example from one of our recent meetings where um, where Kinsler Wilson singled out someone in the audience by name and spoke directly to that person. That person did not speak at public comment. They did not have an opportunity to respond. And so I just, I don't know if you want to put any more language in here in terms of. You know, I think public comment, the public is speaking to all of you. Then there's response to public comment, where you're all saying whatever you want to say. But I was uncomplimented during that, that, sorry, during that exchange during the meeting because. I don't, I just don't feel like that's the way the council should be interacting.
Well, you could fix that less sentence, turn it in your highlight and say, and not for the public or counselors to engage in discussion or debate, period. So you're telling both parties that's not what it's for.
Yeah, I mean, I guess my concern is the council has, has the ability and correctly so to respond to what you hear in public comment. So you do want to speak to those things. It's just a question of, just like we tell the public, you're talking to the council through the president and not to specific counselors. I just don't think counselors should be signaling people out in the audience.
Unless they've spoken on that. Because when you're making response to comment, to public comment, you're quite often saying, Betty, I really agree with you. I like what you say. I hear you or whatever. So on that level, it is.
Yeah, and I, and I know that that's, yeah, and I get that. I get that that's the practice.
I know what you're saying.
But in this case, right, this was someone who hadn't spoken.
No, no, I know. So what I'm saying is, is maybe we need, like, the conflict of responding to the public, that it wouldn't, that we wouldn't respond to the public kind of gets, gets removed in certain ways. But a lot of the other ways, the question is, is how do you clean up?
Well, and that's why this is, this is geared towards a not for the public to engage in discussions or debate with the council. Because I've heard a million times where people will say something to a counselor and it's like, no, we're not having, you know, the chair will say, we're not having a discussion here. This is for you to speak. And then the council gets its opportunity to speak out.
Well, like the town meeting or the fire districts or wherever, like at the annual district meeting, you say, the previous speaker or a speaker. You're never supposed to refer to anybody by name. Do you know what I mean?
But on top of that, I referred to somebody who didn't speak.
Well, no, I get, I understand what you're saying, but you could, I mean, you couldn't have easily referenced that person by saying an individual or.
Yeah.
Someone in the town or you could even, as you said, someone in this room, that you wouldn't have to do the same thing, but it would be not identi- I.
Well, I, I, I think you, you could have expressed the viewpoint you were expressing without, without talking specifically.
But you see, but it's like, it's more of a decorum thing rather than there's something.
It is a decorum.
Or if you don't have decorum, you just don't have decorum. You can put a whole.
That's true.
There's, you know, but what is, you know, what's it state, essential by the body?
Well, I, I, I just think just in general as a goal, decorum would be useful coming from all sides.
You could put something in there that says that, that, you know, that, I mean.
Well, that might be something, we talked about that, that some of these other towns have preambles. That might be something that's in the preamble that applies to all of this.
There was some language, and I have to look at the town, but I did look at some of the other stuff and I was very helpful.
Because it's kind of like that we've gone, you know, obviously we've left the town meeting, form of government behind. People are kind of entering our way into the past. Do you know what I mean? So at the beginning of each, at a town meeting or a fire district or whatever, there is that preamble that says that you, you know, moderator gets up and says, you know, do the following things. And you're not being a phone thing. You know, can we have a statement like that in these? Could it be added just a simple one?
I can look at this in like, there was language. I just don't remember which town it was, which kind of flushed that out a little bit more in terms of decorum. I, I just think it's worthwhile. I think it, it would be nice to get that from the public. It would also be nice for the council to consider that, I think.
I think it would be helpful. It would absolutely be helpful. You know, having been on both sides of this, I used to comment part of that before I was elected. And I think it'd be helpful to have some of that, the, maybe a reminder, a little statement. I mean, it could be incredible, the rules, but it also could be a statement that when we open a public comment, it's like a free sentence thing. I mean, a very quick thing, just to remind people as we enter that session.
Now, all the comments, I'm going to. Amherst has a cool conduct, a movement to depth on the atmosphere, the professionalism, uh, just the general conduct of everyone. Uh, so that, that's one I would say.
Yeah, I think that was one of the, that may be.
So let me look at that. Um, just, it's just a suggestion and then you think about that, that's useful. We'll see. So when we get to six B, which is where we left off, I also added a new sentence there, which is, councilor should not, shall not speak without being recognized by the presiding officer, except to call the previous question or the doubt that was itself a form. Because again, I think in terms of the conduct of the meeting, the, the president, the presiding officer, you know, counselors should be able to speak, but they're supposed to ask to be recognized, but the president recognizes them and then they speak. Um, I feel like it's gotten to the point where everyone's chugging. And um, I, I think it would be, it would be lent to the decorum.
Okay, jump up the second line, our topic here. Shall be recognized by the chair and shall speak. These are her name yet.
No, I, I wrote shall state, this is her name. And if a resident of Barnstable, the village in which they reside, I wanted to get away from. Originally it was their address that I had, that's helpful.
Isn't there, but isn't there a rule, isn't there a rule in our case law, so?
Uh, I don't know what I'm talking about.
You love it, it works, it matters. That was something I thought when I read that. But I mean, we could.
I mean, there was definitely the opinion about um people getting to uh be critical and say, you know, you can't shut, shut them down. Yeah, um, I'm not, I'd have to take a look at that. So the vastly folks who identify themselves.
You put, you say, shall be recognized by the chair and shall be asked to state their name.
So let me check and see if there is any reason why we have that. I'm not, I'm not sure that.
I feel like.
I'll double check. I think that if people speaking are not a town of Barnstable resident, I would not weigh their input as much as I would if they were a town of Barnstable. So I don't want, it's like all those emails we've gotten to say, no, negative.
Where the council parks, I mean, that's why I don't know where they live or not that they have.
Yes, but I, that I think that it would, that their, a town of Barnstable residents' perspectives would mean more to me and greater value than non-resident, somebody coming from much of the town that's not a negative.
I mean, yeah, I understand.
I would want them to suck the oxygen out of the room if there was a. Non, non-town of Barnstable resident.
Well, they'll still be, they suck it up and suck the oxygen out of them. Sad disregard.
Sure, yeah, I understand. But my point is, it would, it would matter to me as a council. What if they're a town of Barnstable.
We'll, we'll see.
Yeah, we'll take a look at that. Um, but for the moment, yeah, so we took away, tell us, you know, exactly what we were, and just say, state the village in which you reside. You're not a resident, just state your town of Barnstable.
I think there was a court case that they said they could use this follow-up language.
Well, that was a phrase word?
Well, you're right with the exception of private words. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know that it's hard launch to get up and scream or semis or anything like that. But you could certainly get up and say things that are highly critical of what people are talking to. And the basic message is you can't shut people down because you don't like what they're saying.
I think so.
And you know, um, while in the past, uh, boards have said, we would like you to be civil, that is not actually a legal requirement. And you cannot say you have to be civil. You can express yourself in a disagreeable way as long as you don't cross that line of quote-unquote five words.
And whoever's watching the clock has to watch three minutes.
Right, so you can regulate sort of things that are not related to the content, which is when they're late, speak for three minutes. And then we're gonna ask for the stop. They can't, they don't like what they're saying, so just stop. What are the things in that section?
Can I ask one thing? I guess it's function where we want to put. Um, I noticed a lot of the other towns, they use the Roberts rules.
Yeah.
Why do we use Masons?
That's a good question. I don't know.
Is that in the code or is that something?
It's in the, it's in the rules.
But are Masons?
I don't know. I, I've gotten to know.
I know.
Well, one is more formal and one is less, this is a part of the procedure. Roberts is more of a, is more, more positive. Right?
It's more of a what?
More for the board, more like a.
Yeah, the corporation.
Yeah, like this is like.
I don't think. I honestly don't know.
I don't remember any of those that use Masons.
Yeah, I did see.
Was there one other?
I'd only heard of Roberts when I, when I started here. And then it was like, no, we use Masons. Oh, okay.
Well, you're familiar with both.
I'm not familiar with both. I'm familiar with Masons.
You're more or less, I mean, at least from my experience.
I don't, I don't know where they diverge. They are very similar.
I, in the last, um, place I have a big surprise. I mean, I don't know which one more.
My opinion is probably to go with whatever Karen does. And also. Thanks for the backup. I mean, you know, it's not a right or wrong thing. It is, it is, you know, I thought it was interesting that it was Masons, but that's what I guess it's been. I don't believe in using that.
It is a practical.
I can talk to the former town attorney and see what she knows about that, but I don't.
It's a practical matter. Ninety percent of our motions.
I think it is.
Pretty self-inflicted, it's a great rule. And I don't think, for the council as a whole, it makes a lot of difference.
Probably not. Yeah, I, I don't, I don't have a familiarity with Roberts.
Have a lover, well, motion, this is. The burden of legal, it's probably ninety percent of that.
Yeah, and I, yeah, when we get to that, yeah, I added language just because when things come out of a meeting, I'm, I'm looking up, is that debatable? Is that whatever? So I thought it would be helpful to have it. So, okay, so if we're, if we're starting at six B, so that's sort of what we did not go over last time. So that first sentence is, is new.
Well, I don't understand this doubt of process of form. Was that a bit established when we did roll calls? I don't understand.
So if someone gets up and leaves the room.
Oh, so.
Well, several people get over, you know, we have court, so we call.
Oh.
And the next page.
Regarding six B. Consider cessla.
No, I was thinking of that.
But um, the thing is, um. To my knowledge, we're not timing councils in this.
I do sometimes.
I think this, you have that point in the last meeting.
We, we, we did, we kind of tried. Yeah, it actually wasn't. Right, I mean, it generally is, but I, you know, for me, it's important to have some guardrails as well. And, you know, informing function, this is a business meeting, department, which is trying to, you know, bravery is the soul of width, trying to be direct. Yeah, you know, my use of that in public meetings is just in efforts to. Sometimes, you know, we diverge and it's always necessary. God may do it. Any, you, whomever. If you have that as a point of order, at least you can always say, no, we'll, you know, say, except for the council, you can vote on it. You know what I mean? It's just one of those ones.
That was perfect.
Anyway, that, that's why I think it's important to have those structural aspects. Not that you were asking that question.
No, I understand. Um, but my, my point is, I think although it was clear that we timed the residents' public comment, that we weren't necessarily timed. And I, I, you know, it's just like watching volleyball sometimes, you know, I just watch, paying attention to, to the discourse and not necessarily the time.
Right.
So.
So to situation.
Right. Time.
The time.
The clock master.
Yeah, I just wanted to stay there.
And also, whether you want to make any change to, no council member shall speak to the same question more than twice until all other members choose and to speak or spoken. I don't know. And I'm wondering whether you want to say everyone gets to speak once until everyone's had a chance and then you go back and speak again.
Is it, would it be for a statement rebuttal?
Maybe.
Yeah, yeah.
And then you're done. Like, I say it, you know, Craig says you're leaving and then. Saying why not be capable?
So maybe.
No, I, to me, I, I would say, yeah, I think that you go around them, the diars before. Because you could have.
Yeah.
Got their opinion, but that.
That makes more sense to me.
Yeah, I just want to throw that out there.
I would go with what's up. And the next page. On the next page. Hey, so this just. Pass that one, if something is debatable or not. And some other stuff.
Do a charity.
I don't know. So that's basically just procedural practice. And then, there's sixty. Since what, the way I've always heard is everyone always says I know what the question is, as opposed to what called previous question, so I put it in there as an acceptable way of saying that.
But if one is correct, why don't we just say if one is correct?
I think as, as a trial office, we're going to accept the subject of the exact verdict. The call of the question.
I don't think I think the question is incorrect. I think the more formal way of saying it is on call with previous question. But I think it's understood that they don't mean that, so I just thought I would summarize that. And then when it said a two-thirds vote, I just added the public council president's vote. It's not a full council, because I want to see why we're not there. She should be part of that. It's just how it works. It's a motion to move the question passes, you all take a vote. So then, the next page, so just a couple of propositions that were missing, so I can add. And then Rule eight, which is votes. I just want to restate it, what was there to say, except as otherwise provided by the general laws, the town charter, town ordinance, or these rules, any action by the council requiring a vote shall be by a majority of the council's president voting. So that's the default, and then unless there's some other authority that says, no, it's a different quantum of vote. So, like zoning is two-thirds. The vote to go past eleven o'clock under your own rules is two-thirds. There are other, there are other, you know, law organizations is two-thirds.
I think that's important to put in. Chris, to, to what you said, I mean, Chris and I, you only once here during the meeting a year ago, when there was, he was, he was there, he was there, the whole thing about the regulatory agreements, changing zoning, making it two, all that, you know, so I think this is important to clarify.
But do you want to include that as a rule? Those are, these are the, I could put, I could put in for example, and list of things, it's not going to be exhaustive.
No, I don't think you have to. I'm just saying, because of that, that, I'll call it a gasoline meeting, I mean, it's just horrible. That, because it ended up saying there was no legal standing vote for what we were voting on, it was, it was just miserable. But I just think that this is good, and it, and I think it speaks to whatever town rule.
I think the meaning that you're referring to was a question as to whether, because, because state law changed with respect to zoning, so in certain circumstances, it drops down to a majority vote, and then the question was, did you as a council want to change our regulatory ordinance to mirror that or to keep it at the higher two-thirds vote? Because those agreements typically provide a waiver from zoning, and before the state changed that zoning quantum of vote, it would, if you were providing a waiver from zoning in a reg agreement, it was the same quantum of vote as what you would need if you were getting a zoning in that, and that was always two-thirds. And so then the question became, now that the state has dropped that to a majority in certain circumstances, did the council want to make that same change for the regulatory agreements? And I think the presentation to the council could have been clear, so, you know, that's what it is, but that was really the question before you, and the council didn't vote, we ended up withdrawing it at the meeting. And so, from my point, from my point of view, that, that defaulted to we're leaving it at higher projects.
Exactly, but that's why I like your language. I think this is important.
I think that you insert some examples, that might be helpful to our new council.
Do that, give them that's helpful.
Well, I think.
Examples in the rules, you mean?
Examples of different quantities of, of, of place of the party.
I think the problem with doing that is it makes it seem exhausted, and if it's not exhausted, it's a little bit misleading.
I mean, at the end of the day, we're there to advise that council on what the proper vote needs to be.
Typically, right on the.
Right, right. So.
Like included.
Leave it. Um, so that was eight, and then eight K. So the roll call. That's in the charter. All final votes of the council on ordinances, corporation orders, and loan organizations shall be by roll call vote, clearly recorded by clerk. And what I added was all votes taken in executive session shall be roll call votes, that's the legal requirement. All votes taken in meetings in which any council is participating remotely shall be roll call votes, that's the legal requirement.
So if any one counter requests a roll call vote, it becomes a problem, which has to be moved on.
I think there's a provision somewhere where someone can request a roll call vote. I can double check that, but I believe it's simply by if someone asks for it, because like you doubt the vote. You know, if you take the vote and someone says, I doubt the vote, then you would do a roll call. I believe that's how that would work.
If somebody requests a roll call, it's legally obligated to provide a roll call vote.
I don't know if that's how it would actually work. I think it would be more, it would be everyone in favor say aye, and then someone would say I doubt the vote, and then the town clerk would have to poll you. I believe that's how it would work.
There's no way that if, if Craig said, I doubt the vote, that, that, that roll call wouldn't then be taken. If, if someone doubts, if someone doubts the vote, are we legally required to say?
Yes, I believe, I believe you are, it's how the plan where it says that.
But that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, it makes sense, I just didn't want to be able to have a.
I'm not sure even if it's a down vote, you just want to make sure that the counselors who made a vote are on record, you know, take this aside.
Yeah, I mean, I can look, I'll look at some of the rules regarding that. Yeah. I'll look at that.
I have a strange question. In Masons, aren't, you will have, are you, you're allowed to vote present? Are you as well? Would that be the same as abstention? I know that's weird.
Yeah, I don't know that present is actually a vote, so abstention, when you abstain. You're, you're basically not voting, but you do still count towards the quorum.
Right.
So that's different from when you recuse yourself, which you typically do if you have a conflict of interest. If you are recused, you don't count towards the quorum, and usually best practice is to leave the room, but you don't count towards the quorum when you abstain, you do count towards the quorum, but then you don't count when you're figuring out, you know, the majority, president voting, you didn't actually vote.
I guess it's the same, it's the same.
Yeah, I mean, under the usuals, it's vote yes, vote no, abstain, or pass, and then you get a chance to, I guess, think about it and then come back to it, and then you still have to. Yeah, I did notice, I think in Masons, there was something about where you don't get to pass, but you actually have to vote, but I don't.
I just think present is even more, has the risk of abstention.
I think abstention is just clearer for the record.
Right.
You know, either you're voting or you're abstaining, or you're recusing yourself, and then you're out.
Right, just a question.
Yeah.
That you put up the rule ten, record keeping communications, and shall videotape the meetings. If there's a technical glitch that, that for some reason. The IT department is not working.
Yeah, I mean, that's not, that's not a legal requirement, you know, just that's something that we do. So I'm saying, yes, we're not following.
There's some technical glitch with the IT, or committee or team, that suggested by Karen that under Rule ten, in accordance with all the new communications, department staff shall videotape all meetings. All said tapes on the town's website. I'm envisioning a problem.
A glitch is, say, shall to the extent feasible.
Shall endeavor to.
I'm just saying.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I put that there because that is our practice.
Sure.
Yeah. Nothing's a hundred percent in this world, so that's, that's the taxes, so.
But it wouldn't invalidate the union.
No, because it's not a, it's not a legal requirement. I could say shall endeavor to, or shall make best efforts to.
And then, and one day they'll say, man, I just can't do my best efforts today.
Best efforts is, I mean, it's a, um, shall make best efforts to videotape all parties.
So, you know, we're about to get into the committees, but nowhere in here, and, you know, we want to finish this first, but we know where we talked about the decorum, maybe you have enough care.
But I looked that up and bring it back.
What?
I think she's just going to look it up and bring it back.
Yeah, no, but one thing I wanted to bring up is, in the advent of, of the cell phone age, you know, I would like to have some language on the use of cell phones during the meetings and texting during meetings. I don't think it's appropriate, but I'm just saying, there has been nothing, since we're about to move to kind of a separate piece. As we come back, I don't know if people want to just think about that as we come to, but I think it's distracting, and I don't, I think you, you certainly could put yourself on, up on the shelf in front of you if you have an emergency, but I think acting during the meetings is inappropriate, I think.
Yeah, I think one, one of the towns has something about councils shall not engage in private conversations during meetings. So I, I think it might have been in, they, they seem to have it pretty flushed out. I'll take a look and give you some language to think about, and.
It was a suggestion when you went to the town council.
Yeah, I mean, the AG basically says, you know, I think they don't love it, but they can't tell you, you can't do it. What they say is you can't do it if you're reaching a quorum of counselors, because then.
And we don't know that.
Well, you will now.
Oh, that's true.
Well, no, 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 I think that's a great point, that, that may be the only, well, I don't know, again, you have to have personal experiences, but we have to think about, we're in this age, and we have to consider it in the course.
I, I mean, I understand that, but at the same time, as long as the council is not texting one another. I mean, do a lot of people sit on their phone? I make my phone occasionally, because, you know, they're like, I often time to look things up. You know what I mean?
I, I have said to like the president that I, I might text her if there's some procedural issue, or I don't want to jump up and interrupt her, but I might want to say, don't forget to do X, or say this as a procedural matter. I would sometimes do that.
I think though, when we went to the training, I think it was that any texting that's going on in that public meeting actually comes part of the, where people, I don't.
I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't, yeah, that's not the test. The test is, you know, if you, if you text your mother during the meeting.
Yeah, no, no, yeah, but if, if I'm texting person, I say person.
When you're being selfish or not.
Right, but that's, but that's based on the content. The content is you're speaking as a counselor to another counselor on council business. That's a couple of factors. It's not that you did during the meeting.
Right, first violation. But that came a month, several years ago, and it was very ugly with the texting to counselors.
Yes.
Yeah, there was something about Boston City Council.
Yeah, and it was here in Barnes?
No, it was here in Barnes. Oh, yes, yes, there was, yeah.
But, yeah, I don't know, I understand the intention, but I, 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 I never, you know. We're like officials, not school children, so I can actually write to the other one, I have, we should go to Bang the Gavel. More, put it down, Stephanie.
You should, you should assume if you're texting on anything related to council business, and that should be viewed broadly. That's a part of it.
Yeah, I mean, and that.
Unless it falls.
Well, maybe we could shed language about that.
Right there.
That there should be, you know, implicit, I mean, it should be implicit, people should, people should understand that that is a violation of real means. Even, I mean, just as probably, there's, there's not a quorum, but just a bad practice.
Yeah, it is a bad practice.
And what about, what about people texting, residents texting council during meetings?
Well, that is bad practice, just that stands for, in practices, that's, that's a snowball of bad practices, in my opinion. I don't, yeah, I don't text anybody about town stuff ever, period. Did you know, counselors? You know, that's a whole nother story. Do we want to, we're going to delve into that, and we talked about a counselor code contract. We could put that in there as well, I mean.
Well, I guess what we're talking about is the decorum as a code of conduct.
I'm talking about the decorum, make sure we talk about this, and then, remember, we took out that these are going to be hand delivered to your address at the warehouse. Okay, we've moved, we're, we're fully in the electronic, we're going to have people that are going to be just reading remotely, we just, we just need to think about it.
Right, no, of course, and that's, but I think it's a valid point, because it depends, do you want to, how, how broad do you want to make it? And how, how much do you want to micromanage, but then you can also have it, not a micromanaging scenario, where you say that this is the expectation of code of conduct for professional, professional conduct, whatever you want to call it, and have it be a better act as an event, this time. I'm not advocating for that necessarily, but it's not a terrible idea. Think about the heads, you could, or people understood that, you probably should not be doing that either. And then when it comes back, it's like, wait a minute.
When these rules were drafted, we weren't a cell phone.
But then, see, we don't have to discuss, I just want to keep it in mind as we're moving on to the subcommittees, that as we move forward, it sounds like, again, I understand those, but then we're still significant, they've really, yeah, they've thought through a lot.
You're like the, the council administrative assistant shall be the clerk of town council committee.
Make that a word, make meetings.
Where are they?
It says the council administrative assistant shall be the clerk of town council committee meetings.
So. We don't have an administrative assistant. What's your title?
What's your role?
Cindy, what's your title?
Administrator.
Are you the town council administrator? What is your?
Yes, town council administrator.
Really, you should have her.
Yeah, exactly.
Do you have a, a suggestion, Cindy?
No, I just, there's just no such position in our office, so you're beating up the rules.
Thank you, no? I welcome your input. Okay, so Rule eleven, council committees. So I added, president, after the organization of the council, the president, subject to approval by the full council, may appoint members to standing committees of the town council. Those are the things we're talking about. And then I added, the sentence, appointments of counselors to the appointed standing committee shall be made in.
And then I added the status, appointments of counselors to the appointment standing committee shall be made in accordance with section thirty seven of the town code. It's a process that's central to their. Which we were following, which we weren't following for a while, and now we are, and so I'm forcing that by citing.
But I, I find that program a little bit strange, because it sounds like you're pointing them to the committees. I know that sounds stupid, because I just said what it says, but we're not really appointed to the committees, we're this liaison, we're not.
No, standing committees, that's why I added of the town council. So there are, there are, presumably you could have like a standing committee on votes, or I don't know if you even have that anymore.
Other than standing, one thing, there's the.
Agreements.
Yeah, good, no, there's the tax, in tax.
That's it. That's it.
Yeah. Okay, so these are the standing committees, which are not listed.
How many standing committees or what are the standing committees?
TIF tie, which is the tax, financing and appointments committee.
Yeah, so there's just two.
Correct.
Then why is the appointments committee the only one that has um, so sort of town code? Why would the tie, Karen, have that?
I don't know.
Can I ask a question? Did President Penn actually approve through us appointments to the TIF tie? Like.
I think so.
I don't know.
The TIF tie committee came out of planning and development, it starts in finance, the, the only reason there's a TIF tie committee is because there's counselors appointed that are the voting members, they're the only ones that are the voting members, but it's a committee of nine. It's got the planning and development director, the director of finance, the house board mayor.
But how are councils? When, when did we, when, since President Penn has been organized of the council, it says they're subject to approval by the full council to appoint members to the standing committees, I don't think we, I don't think since I've been.
When she sent out in the beginning, when you all were elected, were committees she wanted to be on, and if you wanted to be on the appointments committee or the TIF or the tie, that is how she got her suggestions.
That's the suggestion, but it says subject to approval by the full council, so once she made her decisions.
I'd have to look to see if we did that with the appointments committee, we did do it with the appointments committee, yeah.
Yeah, I don't remember. Because that was something that needed to change from past practice, where we weren't following the code and that law. And I know that that got through by the council, right?
What did?
The appointments, the president's appointments to the appointments committee.
Yes.
Yes, TIF tie, I don't know, I don't.
But TIF tie.
It originally set up planning and development.
But I've never, when the TIF tie met, I've never seen more than like three town councils.
That's all that's on the. There's only three counselors that are voting members, the other members are staff that present, because the application goes through planning and development.
Okay.
Then it goes to Mark Mill in finance and he comes up with all of, you know, what it's gonna look like over five, 10, 15, 20 years of amortization. All of that document comes to a nine-person presentation, but only three counselors are voting members, whether they pass or deny the TIF tie. It's on that committee and there's only three.
John Crowe.
Paul here.
Yeah.
I guess I never, I never knew that that was one of the committees, I mean, it doesn't matter, that's just good to know. I guess I feel like some of this stuff is all a little mushy.
Actually, that's, that's good information, Cindy, because, uh, I don't think it's documented to the public anywhere, how that committee is, is um, formatted, I know the three counselors.
I don't know if the planning and development has any, that, I know they've got information on their webpage. I can look to see if they explain what the committee is, but the application sits on there, the process sits on there, and an explanation of what they do. I'm not even sure if it's a.
Are you familiar with any where presence of that committee, whoever's been in the meetings, right?
Yes.
We didn't find any records to the year twenty twenty four.
Because they haven't had a second meeting to post their, to approve their minutes.
Oh, perfect.
But the TIF and tie is on the agenda and a presentation is done at town council level. For the public and it's a public meeting, so.
That is a problem with committees that don't meet often, that the minutes are not accepted and they languish.
But the open meeting law says I have to have them on the website in a draft form thirty days after the.
Well, they don't, they, it's like, they're on the website, they have to be.
Uh, available for the public, so if anybody wanted to see them. I have all the records from, but th- these, these don't happen that often.
I know.
I think we met.
Once.
A month ago, and I think the previous meeting was September or.
Yeah, twenty-two, so they don't happen that often. But they do have their own dedicated page.
But I guess the question is, I would follow them in the process for appointments at councils to that, but I don't, I don't have the answer to that. I don't remember sending those appointments, I don't know.
I, I just don't.
I didn't appoint a town. The town council president gave me three names and that was it. And I followed her like I would always follow.
I appreciate, uh, I can go behind this one.
So the next, the next rule is the ad hoc committees, and those are the ones that are supposed to be temporary in nature, like, like the ones that were just created. So what I added to make, I think, a little clearer is the president designates the members of the committees. The committees are established by both the council, which is how we did this, the council approved the creation of a committee, but then the president designates the members. Um, and then we can talk a little bit about whether we want to address the way of this dominance here, which is when she, the president, appointed the counselors, but then the question became for the non-council members, how, how to address that. That's not addressed in here right now, so it's something that you all should think about, what you want to do or not do. So the way it reads now is the president of the town council, and designate the members of ad hoc committees that are established by both of the council, the members of which shall include counselors and may include registered voters in the town board's board as is deemed necessary. And then the sentence that I added after that is the chair of any such ad hoc committee shall be a counselor unless expressly permitted otherwise by the council in its vote establishing the committee.
Yeah, I, I don't see that, I don't like that, like Rick Presby was just voted for the housing committee as the chair. So now we've got to nullify Vol. Schulte and Rick Presby.
Well, I'm not suggesting nullify any of these.
But why would we add, but what, what, what was the genesis of that sentence?
Well, I think to my point of view, and again, it's your decision to make, um, is a couple of things. One is, I don't think the residents of the town are necessarily as well versed in some of the procedural aspects of how we use the program. They're not typically running town meetings, um, and so I think there's value to having a council be the chair, but this gives me the opportunity for the council to say, no, they don't care if we give the way. Um, and I also think depending on what the committee is, these are, these are committees intended to advise the council, and I think it's, it's a question whether we want that committee, I would think we would still want the council to be taking the leadership of these committees, but including residents as members, but that's not my decision.
What about, what about wordy?
I think that we should allow the committee, who I believe is it's made up of counselors and embedded residents, should have the foresight, understanding of who they're working with, the role of the committee to make those decisions that are appropriate at the time for the committee and the committee, because, I mean, I guess I feel that way because I sat in a lot of interviews, so I felt very comfortable. But you know, it might be that Craig never watched any of those meetings and he doesn't know why we chose Rob Schulte or somebody else, and so then we're, I just think it's, it's kind of stripping away the uniqueness of the committee body that is literally sitting in the room doing the work and it's kind of hamstringing that system by having to group other people not involved in making those decisions. I would support letting the committee make that decision.
I would too, I, I, I think I would strike that sentence and, because it then leads to, well, what else are we gonna tell them they have to do? I, I would strike it and let the ad hoc committees operate as they see best, it's not like they're the standing committees, which I think have much more rigor to them, and those are counselors, these are ad hoc committees and I'd allow them, again, the leeway, I, I can speak for the housing committee. Uh, we went around and we, uh, everybody spoke, we talked about why we were there. Uh, we got to know each other a little bit, and then we had two candidates, we had a town counselor and one of the registered voters, and we voted for the registered voter. And, uh, I thought it was a very good process.
I mean, I actually, it was interesting, when the committees were being formed, I was asked, I don't remember, but one of the counselors, hey, is there any rule that the chair has to be a counselor? And I read the rules and I said, no, there is no such rule. My, personally, I don't necessarily think that's the way I would do it, but it's not my decision. What I would suggest is if you don't want this, I, I wouldn't leave it silent, I would say the chair of any ad hoc committee shall be selected by the members of the committee. So that it's clear, it could be a resident.
I definitely think we should make that clear, because obviously.
Because the question here, right, so instead of being silent, I would have to say, yeah.
And then I also, do we need to say anything about, about the president and vice president in their role?
Oh, cannot serve.
Yeah, they cannot be chair.
That would be good. That, that's in.
I thought it was somewhere, I was, I was thinking it would be in this section.
So I'm gonna say shall be selected by.
Well, no, this is just the ad hoc committee.
I know, but the ad hoc committees, the president cannot be.
But there's a section that says, I mean, president, vice president cannot serve as chair.
Yeah, we will likely switch it to remember ad hoc committing information, and it will be clear to have it. And that actually, I'm sorry, um, that leads me to, uh, Councilor Clark was asking, should we say that the main membership should be an odd number, which I think yes. Um, and when I talked to the president and said, under the rules, you're, you're an ex officio member of every committee, what the rule didn't say is whether you're voting or non-voting, and I think it should be non-voting, because otherwise, depending on which committees the president actually wants to get lobbed in, it floats the numbers off the median weight. Um, plus, I just think it makes sense that, you know, she's creating the committees, the president's creating the committees. Um, and under the rules, the president is an ex officio member of every committee, but I think it should be in the non-voting rule, so that it's, when you're making the appointments, you actually know how many members. So that's something I feel that we see if I added that or if it was. And I can discuss that with her, and she said, if that makes sense to her, but it wasn't in the rules. Okay, so this says the chair of any such ad hoc committee shall be selected by both of the committee.
Oh, that's good.
And then ad hoc committees. Shall be comprised of an odd number of members.
Um, as far as the deadline, you know, when we, when President Penn set the deadline to be October first, and then we had the appointments.
The deadline for the work of the committee.
Yeah. You know, I'm just wondering if we want us to.
Well, we had about two months to lay.
The whole thing got so kicked in the road that it ate up the time, so can you put?
There is, there is language in the vote though that provides flexibility for how to extend that date, if that's what we're getting at.
Yeah, I just wondered if when setting up the committee, could she have said, this ad hoc committee will run for twelve months with the date of seating a chair?
Yeah.
You know, I just think that that would be.
That would be much easier, I love that.
I don't know that it would need to be in here, or whether that's just something for.
I love that, twelve months of seating the chair, because that's.
Yeah, because then, depending on how long it takes, I mean, if it's summer and then one meeting and then you have two reads and this, that, and it's like.
Kind of. Oh, and twelve months of seating the chair.
Because I think her point was to give us, or someone who wants to get the job done, and obviously that's gonna affect the plan.
If they get it earlier, then that's fun.
Isn't each one established by its vote, you know, and you, wouldn't you just put that in line, because each of those committees has a different sunset date.
So I'm taking your suggestion of writing X months instead of saying, so it won't be the same for.
Right.
Yeah, 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 so if she wanted the committee around six months or one year, eighteen months, and it starts in the date of seating the chair, so that then you don't have to go and change the date, and you don't have to go back to town, I don't know if we have to go back to town council to change the date, I don't know.
How about, but I'm sorry, we're.
Just a procedure question, um, last meeting, we received a copy, the public got a copy of this, I don't know if you saw this, but this, I know Tiffy has done a great job of getting some of these things posted for the ad hocs. Will the next version of this be posted on the website so the, so the public can see this, because I, I'm not following some of the changes, because we don't see the latest copy of that.
Sure. If that's a good idea.
Yeah.
So the next, the next version of this will be posted to the table again, okay, great, thank you very much, okay, thanks, okay, thank you all.
We get to a lawyer for recess, or do you want to take a five minute? How far do we send to go? Oh, my gosh, it's almost seven.
Do you want to power through or?
How many more are there?
It's not much more, I don't think.
I don't mind, just want to move to more, if I can just use.
Wait a minute, you want to say?
There is no question, there's no question on the table, you can't move the question. Please try though. I think we should too, I think we've covered a lot, and we're into the committees, I think we need to come back with a fresh one.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can take this up again at the next one, and then I'll probably go back and look at some of the things we talked about. The committee shall be limited to the, shall serve only the specified time periods provided by the time periods, may be extended by the town council president at the request of a future chair if additional time is needed to complete the.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I just think it's, most of it would be really, if that, this whole thing would happen.
Yeah, no, that's probably a better way of doing it, is like, once you actually get organized, then, then the hot work's running.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't realize it would be quite the process to you guys.
Yes, exactly.
That's yours, right?
Craig, we were just speaking about.
My preference would be to call it a day. Well, we're on a break.
Take ready, go to a button.
Can't even bring up the darkness.
That's right.
Thank you, I'm really tired of this.
Thank you for moving this, something that I could not do last week.
And, and I wouldn't have known if it was on yet, so we got that question.
I have a question, the question about putting everything on laser fiche, has there, has there been any movement on that?
Um, each committee, ad hoc committee is under a subcommittee on our town council webpage.
Did see that.
And all of the information will be uploaded, I've sent IT all of the info. I don't know, because I'm not an IT person, what it takes on his end.
Yeah.
To get it all on there, but I know he's working on it.
Excellent, yes.
I sent him the, um, members to, to please put the members on there and any and all material related to the meetings, I've asked to have. related to the meetings I've asked to have on there. So I will follow up with him daily to make sure that the info is on there.
I was just curious what, what the response to that was.
Big quarter.
Wow. Unbelievable. The medical group, we had, I had.
I have a little quarter.
Wow.
This is the only quarter I was.
You have, you have the choice.
No, I think maybe for Androids this is still.
Oh, you're an Android.
Interesting that.
I'm Android.
I'm sorry. I got my phone, but I hope to give them a chance.
I have my Apple, my, my.
I can't record that, that's iPhone. I'm Samsung.
I'm not even Apple supported.
Yeah, we need it.
It's too much to keep up.
Everything works.
I think you're great.
So, so Seth, the prevailing.
Are we back there?
Yeah, yeah, let's.
Probably back to.
Let's probably be back to. So the consensus is that we should abort our discussion and.
Whatever you want to do. The call for once, I'd say.
So let's, let's, let's come back at global level. I do think you all should make a recommendation in terms of the appointment process.
Yes.
You know, how, what you want.
Three of us are willing to put this.
Right, but whether, whether you leave it the way it was or whether you leave it as the residents go through the appointments. Which is the change that was spoken, so I just think you should make it a recommendation, whatever, whichever way you want. I think in my sense, I think it was that it was an extra extra long process to go through that kind of process for me. Do you think that we should leave it on point to authority of the president?
It hurts to have more. Everybody wants transparency. Why not? Doesn't bother me.
Plus, this time we actually just created a lot of committees on the shirts.
I just pick our points off.
Let's not do that again.
Only two of the committees created.
I don't know.
That's true. Like, there was one committee that.
There was supposed to.
Yeah, it was supposed to.
Right.
So it didn't make sense.
If we had done that, we would have done the middle at Christmas, so. Right, so that's true. You would just.
You know, I mean.
Oh, five, so it wasn't, we created five, but just two was a lot of work. So I, I don't know. I feel like it's a lot of work.
Oh, I, I mean, it is. But like with anything else, at, at our appointments committees, we could probably go a little bit more brief. You know what I mean? We tend to.
True.
Sometimes it's a urge. And some of the folks that we interviewed just like to opine with their particular.
Sure you can. Through the chair you can.
Twenty-five words. Right, I mean, you could say you got three minutes. Let's do that. I mean, I don't know. I just would hate to, I mean, for me, just based on what I hear from everybody or what the feeling seems to be, in order to continue to foster transparency as people like have more you do with public and less opportunity, there is people say this was done behind closed doors with no oversight. And look at you doing it again. You know what I mean?
What if I leave it to the town council that's seated to make the decision whether they should go to.
Well, they can always suspend the rules and just do that. It's one like, this is a living doctrine. You know what I mean? It's also a, a set of regulations with no teeth in it.
Well, the reason you can suspend the rules is because at the end of the day, our rules are supposed to serve the council. It's supposed to get you where you want to go in an orderly, efficient way. And if the council as a body says, this rule doesn't work for us right now for whatever reason, you can suspend it because the rules are there to serve you, not to get in the way.
I guess the only reason I said maybe we should let the individual council vote on it is prior to this council, there may not have been any reason, everybody might have all said, I'm happy to let the president put people on there and there wouldn't have been any objections to that or maybe that wouldn't have been. I mean, it came down to a vote of, of majority. So the question would be, is each time those, how the ad hocs are set, maybe the majority needs to speak to the process? Because maybe everybody's in majority that were happy with, you know, President Tamish making the appointments or, or, you know, whatever, you know, say if he ended up president or maybe.
I don't think, I don't think that the problem was so much of how it was appointed in the past, but that some of those committees were the records were not, it wasn't done in that public way. And the committees.
And the purposes.
Well, I also don't know how many of those committees have residents, because we're separating out. And no one's questioning the president's ability to appoint the councillors. Then the question is really, should the president also rank the residents? Or should that go through the vetting process that we have for our other boards?
What, and, and I think it should be a process. Just to put, just like, it's not the reason to have. You don't want to get back into, well, we're going to do it this time, but we're not going to do it. Not going to do it for that.
Yeah, but that's basically how we got to where we were this time. We didn't actually change the rule. We took a vote on a day.
Or change it. But, but there was a lot of controversy.
Yeah, yeah.
To avoid controversy. Because this, this council hasn't committed, created this committee to do this thing. You know what I mean?
Now, to be transparent. Right, to think about it a little bit more outside of the council meeting where it was a little bit fraught and to step back and say, you know, so what's the recommendation, whatever it is, but this is the opportunity to think through some of these things with a little more. With more time to think about it.
Right, and there should be standing committees that, as you've all learned, the bodies around state, there should be standing committees that are able to address these types of scenarios and the living documents and the things that we have. It should be ongoing and not just.
This probably should be.
Right, it should be. And maybe in the future at some point, we may create that.
You're suggesting the whole committee should be a standing committee?
Why would I, I mean, because if you have, you don't want to do it in a, like you say, you don't want to just have this group of councillors stand together and change all the rules and then they're not all of that have held for four years and then maybe the next group of councillors will be like, well, we got to have one rule change and that's it. But have it be that as things come up, you handle them. As the climate changes, as the situation changes technologically or personality wise, you would handle those things on a day, on a, you know, continuous basis. Rather than having the whole thing done at once and then just coming back and get it five years, those, that whole thing again.
Or you may want to form this many, like once a year to do a review that will say how it does work and not, you know, not, not needing on a regular basis necessarily, you're not letting it go years and years and years.
Get together and say December, or January and say, looks fine.
Yeah.
Okay. Next January, it doesn't look so good now. Let's do this with a problem this year or do that or whatever. Because there should be standing committees handled, because all this, nothing occurs in the back.
Absolutely.
Gone.
Okay, so. Have you heard? So something about Laura, so Rule 11A. I will add, the chairman is selected by vote of the committee. That ad hoc committees shall be comprised of an odd number of members. And I'll add some language that, that addresses that, you know, the time period for any ad hoc committee shall be specified for a, a certain period beginning from the date of which their first meeting was or something. I'll come up with a schedule. So I want to.
Call it, which are.
So let's come back with 11A. Yeah.
Be a little subjective.
That's what, that's what.
That's for me.
Oh, thank you very much. I was active, so. I will. Thank you for yourself. You all stay sane.
They were all sent to everybody, but if you need a hard copy, there you go. The other thing that I did knew also is what Larry Warren was referring to, his comments.
Yes.
Are in writing and there, I printed them out for you, even though you did receive them. You just can't discuss them at this meeting because they were not introduced.
Right.
So you have to.
They done. Turn your talkers, get, copy next to you. I actually have it else.
Yeah, I sent it to.
And we've got it. All right, so. Okay, except the minutes. On those table.
Aye.
Same.